Good morning, everyone. This is Dr. Val Arquish, Chair of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. I am pleased to call to order the March 4th, 2021 meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Note the presence of all three Commissioners, and we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So I do have some opening comments this morning. As probably many of you know, today marks almost a year since we issued our first emergency declaration in response to the first two presumptive cases of COVID-19 found in Montgomery County on March the 7th, 2020. At that time, none of us could have predicted what was to come in the year ahead. For most of us, our lives had been turned upside down in a matter of weeks last March, going into quarantine, transitioning to remote work, and worrying for the health of our family and friends. Meanwhile, together, we faced the emotional toll of watching the virus spread across our region and our entire country. Over the course of the last year, the coronavirus has taken the lives of 1,232 Montgomery County residents. It's a tremendous loss for our community. I'd like to call for a moment of silence for them and for the over 500,000 Americans whose lives have been lost to this virus. Thank you. Additionally, many of our residents lost their jobs or businesses, had to leave the workplace to care for children or elderly parents, or were sickened with the virus and continue to struggle to make ends meet. Despite this unprecedented year, today, thanks to the grit and selflessness and hard work of so many, Montgomery County remains strong, looking forward and focused on recovery, a recovery that includes everyone in our community. First and foremost, the way that our Montgomery County family has stepped up to serve the residents of Monco has truly been remarkable. In order to carry out our public health and public safety responsibilities during this pandemic, the county has hired significant numbers of staff, created a best-in-the-region countywide testing structure, deployed multiple information platforms, enabled numerous staff to serve constituents remotely, and implemented the infrastructure to securely conduct a free and fair election that saw 244,000 people vote by mail. This was in addition to the core services the county was already providing. We were only closed for two days during the beginning of the pandemic and have been operating continuously ever since. This is due to the incredible resilience and dedication of our team. And while every single person has given it their all, I just want to personally thank our Chief Operating Officer Lee Saltizia and Deputy Chief Operating Officer Barbara O'Malley, who have worked seven days a week since this pandemic began, and I just want to thank them for their selfless service to our entire community. Many of our staff cannot work from home and have continued to put themselves at risk every day to serve our residents. And I want everyone to know how hard our staff have worked this past year. It has not been easy. Every step of the way, our team has risen to the challenge, and I want to commend and deeply thank every one of you for your dedication during this incredibly difficult year. I also want to thank the entire team of people, county employees and our community partners, who have worked tirelessly over this last year to provide relief to our residents impacted by COVID-19. Last March, the CARES Act established a $150 billion coronavirus relief fund for state, county, and municipal governments with populations of over 500,000 people. This allowed Montgomery County to address necessary expenditures incurred due to the COVID-19 public health emergency. Montgomery County received $143 million in direct funding from the CARES Act, which has made a huge difference in our community. Once this funding was in hand, we acted swiftly and decisively to implement programs and initiatives to provide immediate relief to businesses, nonprofits, childcare centers, and individuals across the county impacted by COVID-19. We provided $15 million in funding to 23 Montgomery County Public School districts to help with COVID-19 costs, modifying teaching methods and providing protective measures. The Monco CARES Grant Program provided over 300 childcare centers with grants up to $48,000 and supported over 200 children and their parents with a childcare subsidy. The county's housing department distributed $4.5 million in rent and utility relief to over 1,000 households to help people stay in their homes. In addition, the Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency Rent Relief Program administered by the county distributed an additional $1.8 million of rent relief to 545 households in the county. To support nonprofit groups and help them continue the work they do every day, $5 million was provided to the Monco Strong Nonprofit Resiliency and Restoration Grant Program. And finally, $1.1 million of funding was provided to the Montgomery County Community College for educational programming to train and place students with manufacturing businesses. Although today represents a somber milestone in our fight to end the COVID-19 pandemic, I remain hopeful for the future. We have three safe, highly effective, life-saving vaccines approved for use, and we continue to ramp up our vaccination efforts here in the county. We are ready to give the vaccine as soon as we get it, and we hope that more vaccine will be coming our way in the very near future. If you had told me one year ago that we would have three vaccines available today, I would have told you that this was next to impossible. This story is an extraordinary example of American ingenuity and determination. We also continue to track a decrease in our positivity rate and lower case counts countywide, which is fantastic news. There is a light at the end of this tunnel. However, we're not quite there yet, and we must continue to stay vigilant and keep our efforts up to stop the spread. That includes continuing to wear a mask, keeping a distance of six feet, washing our hands, working from home if you can, and avoiding social gatherings with people outside of your home. And when it is your turn, please get vaccinated. This is the most important thing we can all do to get our community back to normal. We have been in this together from day one, and we remain in this together with a shared responsibility to each other. Let's stay Monco Strong, and we will get through this together. And now I will turn over to Commissioner Lawrence.
Good morning, and thank you, Val. I would also like to take a moment to recognize the year we have all endured living through this global pandemic, and I agree wholeheartedly with everything Val has said. But I'd like to start by adding one very important person to the list of people to thank, and that's our Chair, Val Arquish. Montgomery County has been incredibly lucky during this past year to have a trained physician with a master's in public health as our Chair, leading a dedicated team of public health and safety experts through these unprecedented times over the past year. And as previously said, we have been fortunate to have the support of our dedicated employees who have been operating in a near constant crisis mode for over a year now. But we would be nothing without the strong support of our community. At the beginning of the pandemic, throughout it, and to this day, you have all continued to demonstrate what being Monco Strong looks like. Whether that is meant coming together to make and distribute handmade masks, deliver food to people in need, provide no-cost PPE kits to our small businesses, or volunteer to work at one of our vaccination clinics, the ways that our community has come together over the last year has been truly remarkable. To all of our residents who are still struggling, please know that we are doing everything we can to provide additional relief to you and your families this year. As Val said, Montgomery County received $145 million in direct funding from the CARES Act, which has allowed us to help mitigate the impact of COVID-19 on our residents. Over the last year, we have worked without delay to implement programs and initiatives to provide immediate relief to businesses, nonprofits, our food pantries, and individuals across the county impacted by COVID-19. For instance, the Monco Food Pantry Assistance Program provided $2 million in assistance to provide food security for an estimated 160,000 county residents impacted by COVID-19. In addition, the Food Security and Workforce Development Program provided $1 million of funding to the Pennsylvania Horticultural Society and YWCA tri-county area. These two organizations, in partnership with the County Departments of Commerce and Human Health Services, have developed a program to alleviate food insecurity for families while improving employment skills. We also continue to support the tourism industry, which has been hit hard by the pandemic. The Make It Main Street Marketing Initiative provided $300,000 of funding to the Valley Forge Tourism Bureau to lead marketing efforts to restart business activity and reinvigorate communities in Monco, to focus on the recovery of small businesses and local communities. We also provided a $500,000 grant to the Elmwood Park Zoo, a major driver of tourism in Montgomery County. And finally, we just wrapped up the fourth round of the Monco Strong Small Business Grant Program. In total, since April 2020, the Commerce Department has received 7,387 applications for small businesses and nonprofit relief grant programs, and awarded 2,205 grants for a total of approximately $26 million. And we look forward to launching the next round of small business relief through administration of the Pennsylvania Hospitality Recovery Program, which will open for applications next week on March 12th. We recognize that the road to recovery will be long and challenging, but we are working to put all of our resources towards helping Montgomery County families and businesses recover from this pandemic. And a big part of this is being able to vaccinate anyone who wants to be vaccinated, and we will continue to expand those efforts each week and fight for more vaccine for Montgomery County. I know it's been a long year, but Montgomery County is resilient, and we will get through this stronger than before. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lawrence. Commissioner Gail, do you have any opening comments?
Good morning. I have no opening comments. Thank you.
Okay. All right, then, Ms. Francisco, we will move on to public comment on matters appearing on the agenda. Do we have anyone for that?
As a reminder, if you would like to make public comment, please use the Raise Your Hand feature in the Zoom platform, and we'll give it one moment just to see if people would like to raise their hand to comment. Okay, we do have one person with their hand raised.
All right, then, Mr. Stein, would you please remind us of the rules for public comment?
Certainly. All speakers should let Ms. Francisco know that they are interested in speaking, as she indicated. All speakers should identify themselves by name and municipality. All public comments must be relevant or germane to county business. Under the law, this means that the subject matter of all comments must be limited to items or issues which are currently before the Commissioners for consideration, or which may come before the Commissioners for consideration at a future meeting. Whether a matter is germane to county business is a determination to be made by the county solicitor. Profane, slanderous, or discriminatory language or comments will not be tolerated in accordance with the county's nondiscrimination policy. The time limit of two minutes will be monitored, and county staff will respectfully request speakers to conclude their comments if the speaker goes beyond the time allotted. The Board is not required to respond to questions or comments during this period, so the public is reminded that this is not an opportunity for questions and answers. The Board Chair may direct appropriate county staff to follow up on any questions or additional comments after the meeting. Disruptive behavior, including but not limited to yelling out, arguing whether matters are germane to county business once the solicitors made a determination of such, or in any other way refusing to yield the floor once time is allotted, is grounds for muting or removal from the meeting without further warning or admonishment. And as always, Commissioners, welcome written correspondence, comments, and feedback at commissioners@moncopa.org.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. All right, we can proceed.
Okay, great. Our first public comment will be from Mr. David Morgan.
Good morning, Mr. Morgan.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Good. I congratulate the county Commissioners, staff, and partner organizations for working hard to distribute federal CARES Act money last year, as well as using a measured amount of county money this year for restaurant grants, personal protective equipment, and other needs. These measures, from my understanding, are short-term to help critical needs. What about a long-term solution to the affordable housing needs of our county? Your Way Home, Epic, and Isolation Housing Programs are there to help stem evictions and deal with some degree of shelter from COVID spread, but the county could leverage funds with the help of the Planning Commission to develop jobs in building new housing in areas where there's great need, like Norristown around Main Street, for instance. In February, I emailed my concerns about the life and death struggle of homeless persons along the Schuylkill River and downtown Norristown, since a neighbor shared with me from the online news service patch of January 22nd. A long-term solution involves count job assistance to help people get to work. As I started with organizations like the Montgomery Foundation and Building, as well as building and repairing for affordable housing with the help of private building firms and Habitat for Humanity. In terms of the Justice Center, you already have lots of unutilized building space. With work from home, this very meeting and virtually every other meeting is virtual. In 2021, building government office space and raising county taxes 5% while citizens need somewhere to live does not make sense to me. Why not remodel the 1967 Annex as the Justice Center? Why not make it a walk-up service center with great ventilation, security, and virtual connection to every service in the county? Residents who may not have tech resources can be guided by county staff. The Annex looks like is built to last 500 years. After all, Independence Hall was built in 1753 and still functions. That's in Philadelphia. And in so doing, please also save the mature trees on campus, which provide much-needed green landscape and shade.
Mr. Morgan, your time is up.
All such should be in balance and not raise taxes. Thank you, bye.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. All right, Ms. Francisco, anyone else for general, I'm sorry, comment on the items on the agenda?
We do have one other person, Bill England.
Great. Good morning, Mr. England.
Good morning. I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak this morning. My comments are simple. I am from Sheltonham Township, by the way. I serve on the school board here, and we have worked diligently over the past year during this period of the pandemic. And I just wanted to chime in and tell you that I truly appreciate your leadership during this unprecedented time, particularly the first six months or so, when there were more things uncertain ahead of us than we understood what was going on. I appreciate the leadership there. I appreciate what you have done to reach out to the community, the assistance to our small businesses and restaurants, to the nonprofit organizations that serve so many people across the county, and even ensuring that there was food flowing across the county to people who were in need of having food in their cupboards. The lines that we saw of thousand cars at a time well document that. Your leadership and that of Commissioner Lawrence is truly appreciated. I look forward to the period as we move beyond this, as we're all vaccinated, and I appreciate your continued guidance until we get to the end of this pandemic period and into better days. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. England. All right, anyone else for agenda items?
No other hands are raised at this time.
Okay, then we'll move on to any public comment, I'm sorry, move on to any general public comment.
Okay, we have one person with their hand raised, M. Jones.
All right. Good morning.
Good morning. Can everybody hear me well?
Yes, we can. Good morning.
Okay, good morning. First want to thank you. My name is Mark Jones from Bridgeport. First want to thank Dr. Arquish and Mr. Lawrence for all your work during COVID. I think the information that you guys have given folks, the work that you've done, is valuable, and I for one appreciate you here in Montgomery County. My reason today for wanting to speak to you guys is regarding the Public Defender's Office. I was recently on a call where there was a study that the county paid for done by Temple U. in regards to our Public Defender's Office. While this was a great idea, it was very concerning to learn that one of the directives as this study was to simply study what things we could do within our current legislative framework. I think if we haven't learned anything during COVID, it's that we need bold changes, and bold changes will not come from our current legislative framework. I think one of the biggest concerns, though, for me is, in being on this call, a lot of our folks in the PD's office were not given the opportunity to participate in this study. The individuals that answered questions were chosen by leadership. Many of the people who were on this call to follow up with Temple U. weren't even aware that that call was happening, which raises serious concerns of what the county was really trying to get out of this study. Again, we know that we need some progressive changes to our criminal justice system, but the Public Defender's Office is who defends our most vulnerable populations. And yet, again, the county dictated where they want this information to come from, who was to say it, and basically what would be said. I'd ask that the county revisit this study and open it up to the entire Public Defender's Office so that you can get a real feel of what's happening at our PD office in Monco. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. I am going to just take a moment of personal privilege here, just given the importance of what I think Mr. Jones has just said. Mr. Stein, could you just update Mr. Jones and the public on what steps have been taken since that initial meeting or that initial public forum?
Yes, so that you are aware, the public forum, which occurred at our request, because we knew that there needed to be public input on this report. Also, as a follow-up to that meeting, they are soliciting feedback, both from the public as well as from the attorneys from the Public Defender's Office. And a link was sent to the Public Defenders at our request by Temple University so that every member of the PD's office staff, attorneys, as well as administrative staff could weigh in and give all of their thoughts so that that could be incorporated into the final report, which we are now obviously awaiting.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. All right, any other general public comment?
We do not have any other hands raised at this time.
Okay, thank you. Then we will move on to approval of the minutes. I will move to approve the February 18th, 2021 minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. All right. Next, we have some announcements and a proclamation honoring National LGBT Health Awareness Week. We have two guests this morning. First is Mr. Richard Boudicavoli, the co-founder of the Montgomery County LGBT Business Council, and Mr. Cameron McConkey, the Stonely Emerging Leadership Fellow with Philadelphia Fight. And Mr. Boudicavoli.
Good morning, everyone. Can you hear me?
Good morning. Yes, we can hear you.
Good morning. My name is Richard Boudicavoli. I'm co-founder of the Montgomery County LGBT Business Council. I'm happy to be here for the reveal of the updated County Department of Health and Human Services website for LGBT folks in conjunction with LGBT Health Awareness Week, which begins on March 23rd. The week brings attention to the health disparities that affect LGBT people. I remember my first meeting with Dr. Arquish and other county officials back in June of 2016. I was excited to advance the discussion of LGBT health in Montgomery County. A few weeks later, a website was revealed on the county's Health and Human Services pages, and it's been a valuable resource for LGBT folks across the county. Three years passed, and I noticed that the site needed some updating because of the ever-changing needs of the LGBT community, particularly with trans and mental health services. Fortunately, I soon met Cameron McConkey at a services and advocacy event for LGBT seniors. I discussed the website and asked Cameron for his insight and to make recommendations for refreshing the site, and that's what brings me here today. I want to thank Montgomery County for your commitment to the LGBT community in helping to address these needs, and when I say that, I get a little chill down my spine because you've always been so supportive of the community. Efforts like this continue to strengthen how local government supports its citizens, and it is now my honor to introduce Cameron McConkey, a full-time leadership fellow with Philadelphia Fight.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. As Ricky mentioned, my name is Cameron McConkey. My pronouns are he/him/his, and I'm so grateful to be a part of this conversation today, focusing on the health and wellness of LGBTQ residents of Montgomery County. I've worked extensively on the new LGBTQ Health and Support web resource with Ricky and Tammy Tarlosky, Community Information Content Manager for the Department of Health and Human Services, and we couldn't be more excited to finally bring it to you all today. Our approach to updating the website was grounded in an understanding of the health disparities that impact LGBTQ people. Rather than highlight statistics about disproportionate poor health outcomes, we structured the new website to include a "dynamic I'm looking for" section, which offers general information as well as local resources for several public health issues of significant importance to LGBTQ people. Here, you can now find information on housing and mental health support, transgender healthcare, HIV care and prevention, and more. The new website now includes an expanded crisis resource page, complete with several LGBTQ-specific anti-violence, mental health, and housing hotlines, so LGBTQ people in crisis can get connected to affirming and understanding supportive services. You'll also notice the new website now includes images of LGBTQ people of all races, genders, and ages. We want everyone who visits these pages to see themselves reflected in media content that shows the beauty and diversity of our community. We updated key health and human service resources for providers and for families as well, understanding that caregivers as well as LGBTQ people need accessible and appropriate health education, guidance, and community. Finally, we added new specific language in the form of a mission, vision, and call to action for this work. From the new webpage, our vision reads: "We envision an LGBTQ community free from discrimination and bias in health and social interactions, where LGBTQ individuals know their health status, including potential health risks, know what programs and services are available to support their safety and well-being, interface with LGBTQ competent public service professionals, and..." well-being, interface with LGBTQ competent public service professionals, and experience optimal quality of life with an inclusive and accepting families and communities. Thank you all for being a part of this work and for committing to making these resources a key component of the Department of Health and Human Services. I encourage all of you to visit the page and challenge you to learn or unlearn one new thing about the LGBTQ community. It is a lifelong process to disrupt bias and stigma, and I hope this webpage offers tools to aid all of us in that work. Thank you.
Well, thank you both so much. This has been just a fantastic journey together. I think it's taken us a little bit longer. COVID got a little bit in the way here, but we didn't let it stop us, and the site looks fantastic. I also want to just acknowledge Tammy Tarlosky, who's done a lot of the kind of nuts and bolts work of actually getting this put together and posted, but the content is great. It is so welcoming and just a fantastic upgrade to what we had. We had a good start, Ricky, but this is really a whole lot better. So Cameron, I really appreciate all the time that you have volunteered, for the most part, to get this work done, so very, very grateful for that. I do have a proclamation, but just want to see if either of my colleagues have any comments they'd like to add. Commissioner Lawrence?
Good morning. Cameron, I want to thank you for all the volunteer time that you've given to help with this. I was looking at the site. The site looks great, but I have to give us a special shout out to my man Ricky. Ricky, you're the one who brought this to our attention and brought it to our attention again and made sure it got done. Ricky, thank you for your tireless advocacy for the LGBT community, not just on this issue, but on many issues here in Montgomery County. I want to thank you for your friendship and for the education that you've given me on many of these issues as well. So I'm very happy that it's finally done, but I'm sure Ricky is going to find something else to start nudging us on as well, so we look forward to that.
Thank you so much, Cannonville, and Cameron, and Tammy, and Tara Gordon. I have to mention Tara. When I first, Cameron and I first walked into the room, and Cameron came in, she really lit up the room, and I could tell that this was going to be an incredible journey, so I want to make sure I give a shout out to Tara. Thank you.
Commissioner Gale, any comments?
I have no comments. Thank you.
Okay, great. So we do have a proclamation, which we will figure out how to get to you, and it just really acknowledges the work that you've done and the importance of this work, and it also lets everyone know that the commissioners have declared, let me get the dates right here, that we hereby proclaim, the week of March 22 through 26, 2021, as National LGBT Health Awareness Week here in Montgomery County. And we urge all residents and healthcare partners to help end the disparities and safeguard comprehensive and inclusive services for LGBTQ+ individuals and fight against LGBTQ+ discrimination and bias. So we're so happy to be able to share this with you today and launch this beautiful new website. It will be a resource for our entire community for years to come. Thanks to both of you.
Thank you.
Have a great day. All right, we will move on to resolutions. The first is approval of a contract with certain youth center employees. Mr. Stein?
Yes, thank you, and good morning. Before you, as a resolution to approve a new contract with the Pennsylvania Social Services Union, Local 668, which is the division of the Service Employees International Union. They represent the interests of certain employees at the Montgomery County Youth Center. Their previous contract expired back on December 31 of 2020, and the new agreement would go through January, I'm sorry, December of 2023. Of note, that would include salary increases of 2.75%, 2.5%, and 2.5% for each year, as well as codified paid parental leave as part of their agreement, and settle a number of issues regarding overtime eligibility requirements.
Great, thank you. I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to enter into an agreement with the Pennsylvania Social Services Union, Local 668, for all employees within the collective bargaining unit represented by that union for the period of January 1, 2021, through December 31, 2023. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comments? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. All right. Next, we will vote on two appointments to the Montgomery County Planning Commission. I will move that Jonathan Rindi be appointed to fill the unexpired term of Scott Exley that is set to expire on January 9, 2024, and to appoint Nicole Klein to fill the unexpired term of David Cohen that is set to expire on December 31, 2022, to the Montgomery County Planning Commission, and to serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? All right, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Next, we will vote on an appointment and reappointment to the Suburban Transit Network, Incorporated. I will move that Matthew Edmund be appointed as the representative of the Montgomery County Planning Commission, Annetta McHale be reappointed as the representative of the Montgomery County Department of Mental Health Developmental Disabilities and Early Intervention, and Richard Swoger be reappointed as the representative of the Montgomery County Office of Senior Services to the Suburban Transit Network to serve terms that begin immediately and expire on December 31, 2023, and to serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Ms. O'Malley, advertisements of RFPs.
Yes, number one, an RFP on behalf of assets and infrastructure for environmental remediation consultants and contractors. The successful responders will provide environmental investigative testing services and subsequent abatement services as needed for county-owned buildings. Contracts will be awarded to the highest-rated responders. Two, RFP on behalf of Health and Human Services for in-home services. The successful responders will provide in-home health support and personal care services for older adults as required or no alternative is available. Contracts will be awarded to the highest-rated responders. All bids and RFPs are available on the county's purchasing website at www.madcopa.org/purchasing.
Thank you. I will move to approve the preceding requests for the advertisements of RFPs as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Awards of contract, Ms. O'Malley.
Number one, contract award, assets and infrastructure construction, S.J. Thomas of Lansdowne, PA, $9,086,011. Contract provides for the construction of a garage facility and warehouse building at the Department of Public Safety Eagleville campus. Services are available through a Keystone Purchasing Network contract. Two, contract award, assets and infrastructure vehicles, Whitmoyer Ford Incorporated of Mount Joy, PA, $325,550. Contract provides for five Ford trucks and three Ford vans. Vehicles are available through a PA state contract. Three, contract award, district attorney vehicle, Chapman Auto Group of Portion, PA, Contract provides for a 2021 Ford Edge. Vehicle is available through a PA CoStarz contract. Four, contract award, assets and infrastructure software, E-Builder Incorporated of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, $33,858. Contract provides for the annual subscription fee for the E-Builder project management software. This software is used to manage and analyze county capital projects. Software is available through a JSA contract. Five, contract award, assets and infrastructure engineering, Gannett Fleming Incorporated of Campbell, PA, $288,000. Contract provides for design and engineering services needed to establish and document the scope of the demolition for the Erie Street Prison. Engineering services available from the pre-approved list of on-call engineers as per RFP 1627. Six, contract award, district attorney and health and human services, forensic interviewing, mission kids of Eastern Arton, PA, $410,000. Contract provides for forensic interviewing, family and victim advocacy services for law enforcement officials investigating allegations of child abuse. RFP 2071 was viewed by two providers with one response received. Contract is awarded to the only responding provider who has met all qualifications of the RFP. Contract is for one year with four optional annual renewal terms. Seven, contract award, information and technology solutions software, CDW Government of Chicago, Illinois, $61,841. Contract provides for Palo Global Protect licenses. Licenses provide secure remote access to the county's network. Software is available through a PA CoStarz contract. Eight, contract award, information and technology solutions, contractor services, Eastern Business Software Incorporated of Media, PA, $111,150. Contract provides for technical contractors for the countywide computer rollout project. Services are available through a PA state contract. Nine, contract award, law library, Legal Publications Lexus Nexus, a division of Relics Incorporated of New York, New York, $190,733. Contract provides for electronic legal publication access for the county law library. Contract is for a three-year term. Publications are proprietary. Ten, contract award, public safety firearms range repairs, Action Target of Provo, Utah, Contract provides for shock replacement to the deceleration chamber at the public safety firearms training range. Services are available through a JSA contract. Eleven, contract award, public safety, recording system maintenance, Carousel Industries of North America Incorporated of Exeter, Rhode Island, $66,902. Contract provides support service for the 911 communications recording system. Contract is for the period of 1/1/2021 through 12/31/2021. System is proprietary. Twelve, contract amendment, assets and infrastructure, Guy M. Cooper Incorporated of Willow Grove, PA, $40,000. Contract provides for plumbing construction services for the Mill Grove Visitor Center project. Amendment represents the final negotiation to close out the contract caused by delays in obtaining a national pollutant discharge elimination system permitting. Thirteen, contract amendment, planning commission, engineering, Pinoni Associates Incorporated of Philadelphia, PA, $582,202. Contract provides for engineering services for the ridge pike improvement project from the PA Turnpike to Chemical Road in Plymouth Township. Amendment provides for Supplement H, which includes the design of stormwater facilities for Norfolk Southern to prevent runoff onto the railway tracks, regulatory updates for permit applications, and traffic management technology and vehicle safety improvements as requested by Plymouth Township. Fourteen, contract amendment, planning commission, engineering, Traffic Planning and Design Incorporated of Pottstown, PA, $120,405.43. Contract provides for engineering services for the ridge pike improvement project from School Road to Bellwater Roads in Plymouth Township. Amendment provides for additional hours required to perform subsurface flooring, geotechnical investigation, and preliminary design of a retaining wall and utility coordination, and updated bridge design required to accommodate relocated gas lines. Fifteen, there are eight contract renewals and 11 amendments for Health and Human Services. Providers and services are listed at the end of the agenda.
Thank you. I will move to approve the preceding awards of contract as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment?
I have comment.
Mr. Gale?
Thank you. I disagree with contract award number one related to the construction of the garage facility and warehouse for public safety. I'm a big supporter of public safety, but I believe spending over $9 million for this construction of a garage and warehouse is entirely too expensive, especially since the property owners of Montgomery County have a tax increase this year, and I was outspoken against this when I was critical of the capital budget when this 2021 budget was exposed and the capital expenses. So I'd like to make a motion to separate contract award number one, have that as a separate vote, and have a roll call on it.
I'll accept that motion. So we will move forward then with items two through 15, which have been moved and seconded, and ask for any additional board comment on items two through 15. All right, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. I will move to approve the preceding award of contract number one, as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Ms. Washington, a roll call vote, please.
Chair, Arquish?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lawrence?
Aye.
Commissioner Gale?
Opposed.
Thank you. Motion carries. All right, awards of contract for the Justice Center, Ms. O'Malley.
Number one, contract award, Justice Center, various contractors, $9,406,675 assets and infrastructure. Contracts provide for construction services for the Montgomery County Justice Center, Phase One. General contracting, PJ Dick Incorporated of Pittsburgh, PA, $8,252,675. Specification 6429 was viewed by 152 providers with five responses received. Contract provides for general construction services for the demolition of existing structures and preparation of the site for future construction. Contract is awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Mechanical contracting, Guy M. Cooper Incorporated of Willow Grove, PA, $90,000. Specification 6430 was viewed by 60 providers with one response received. Contract provides for mechanical construction services for the demolition of existing structures and preparation of the site for future construction. Contract is awarded to the only responding provider who has met all qualifications of the specification. Plumbing, Guy M. Cooper Incorporated of Willow Grove, PA, $104,000. Specification 6432 was viewed by 55 providers with one response received. Contract provides for plumbing construction services for the demolition of existing structures and preparation of the site for future construction. Contract is awarded to the only responding provider who has met all qualifications of the specification. Electrical contracting, Electrotech Incorporated of Folsom, New Jersey, $960,000. Specification 6431 was viewed by 52 providers with three responses received. Contract provides for electrical construction services for the demolition of existing structures and preparation of the site for future construction. Contract is awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Number two, contract award, assets and infrastructure, testing and inspection services, David Blackmore and Associates of Pottstown, PA, $344,262. Contract provides for a material testing and special inspections firm that will work on behalf of the county with the Justice Center construction team to ensure project requirements, drawings, specifications, codes, and standards are followed, and the final product is constructed to the highest practical quality. Multiple quotes were obtained from the authorized lift of inspection consultants as per RFP 1801. Number three, contract amendment, assets and infrastructure, construction management services, Skanska USA Building of Bluebell, PA, not to exceed $1,780,655. Contract provides construction management services for design of the Justice Center project, including construction of a new Justice Center facility, renovation of existing court buildings, and renovation and expansion of Hancock Square, including parking, as per RFP 1659. Amendment provides for administration for an owner-controlled insurance program for the full duration of the project and through the 12-year statute of repos, including claims management, policy marketing and placement, loss control programs, and onsite medical services, development of asset management specifications for inclusion in bid documents. Number four, contract amendment, human resources, insurance broker, KMRD Partners Incorporated of Warrington, PA, $30,000. Contract provides for a commercial insurance broker for the county's property, casualty, fidelity bond, general liability, umbrella, and other insurance coverages. Amendment provides for ongoing owner-controlled insurance program, risk management services for the county's Justice Center project.
Thank you. I will move to approve the preceding awards of contract as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Lawrence, and as always, we will be asking for a roll call vote on anything to do with the Justice Center. Are there any additional comments? All right, hearing none, Ms. Washington?
Chair, Arquish?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lawrence?
Aye.
Commissioner Gale?
Opposed.
Motion carries. Awards of contract for emergency procurement, Ms. O'Malley.
Contracts provide for the various goods and services required for response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Number one, response equipment, Health and Human Services, CDW Government of Chicago, Illinois- Number one, response equipment, Health and Human Services, CDW Government of Chicago, Illinois, $64,652. Contract provides for computer equipment necessary to assist county constituents visiting our vaccination sites to move through the registration process quickly and efficiently. Equipment is available through a PA CoStarz contract. Response software, Health and Human Services, CDW Government of Chicago, Illinois, $237,217.68. Contract provides for Microsoft licenses that will enhance the COVID-19 vaccine registration and administration solution. Number three, response services, Health and Human Services, UBM Incorporated of Bethlehem, PA, $45,000. Contract provides registration-linked protection services for COVID-19 vaccination appointments. Contract is for a three-month period for use while a permanent solution is being investigated.
Thank you. I will move to approve the preceding awards of contract as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
I will second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Now, awards of contract for the Southeast Pennsylvania Regional Task Force.
Number one, contract award, equipment upgrade, North Sherman of Clinton, Tennessee, $102,702. Contract provides for upgrades to robots and remotely piloted vehicles with use by bomb squads in the regional counties. Services and equipment are proprietary as vendor is the manufacturer of the units. Two, contract award, equipment upgrade, Ichor Technology of Ottawa, Ontario, Canada, $52,945. Contract provides for an upgrade to the Ichor Caliper MK robotic system used by the bomb squads in the regional counties. Services and equipment are proprietary as vendor is the manufacturer of the units. Three, contract award, equipment, Plate Logic LLC of Downingtown, PA, $25,905. Contract provides for automatic license plate readers for Chester County. Equipment is available through a PA CoStarz contract. Four, contract award, equipment, ESI Equipment Incorporated of Montgomeryville, PA, $22,384.84. Contract provides for a remount of the command body insert for the new field communications vehicle for Montgomery County. Services are available through a PA CoStarz contract.
Thank you. I will move to approve the preceding awards of contract on behalf of the Southeast Pennsylvania Regional Task Force as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
I will second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Any closing commissioner comments? All right, seeing none, I will announce that our next meeting will be March 18th, 2021, and move to adjourn the March 4th, 2021, meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned, and we will move into Salary Board. I see Controller Sanchez, good morning, and Ms. Perdue, good morning.
Good morning.
We will begin with public comment on Salary Board. And this, Francisco, is there any public comment for Salary Board?
We do not have any hands raised at this time.
Okay, thank you. Then, Ms. Perdue.
Thank you. Good morning, members of Salary Board. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Salary Board list. It is a three-page document dated Wednesday, March 3rd, 2021, with a timestamp of 11:50 a.m. Of note, we have two retirees, Mary Jo Donaldson from Children and Youth after 24 years, and Wanda Barbie from Quartz after 18 years. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for Salary Board consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Perdue. Is there a motion to approve the March 4th, 2021 Salary Board presentation as given by Director of Human Resources, Ms. Donna Perdue, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same?
So moved.
Moved by Controller Sanchez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? All right, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn the March 4th, 2021, meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board? Moved by Controller Sanchez. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comments? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Have a great day.
Thank you.